Next is City Manager Council Committee Reports. City Manager is good, Council Committee Reports. Deputy Mayor.
I just have one for the Transportation Policy Board. We had three items. We authorized a change in the Regional Transportation Plan Project Status for the 509 You probably don't care about this, but what was interesting about the conversation was we started a discussion about how we're going to handle the implications of I-976 and whether or not we start trying to make projects take 15% off the top, or it's first come, first served. We don't really know how we're going to deal with that, but it was a pretty extensive discussion about the impacts. And the impacts are even more on Washtot than Sound Transit, so people that think they voted against Sound Transit will be surprised. We also received a Transit Integration Report. The purpose of the report was to increase awareness of ongoing transit coordination activities and opportunities in the region and includes the service providers of community transit, Everett Transit, King County Metro, Kitsap Transit, Pierce Transit, Sound Transit, City of Seattle, Pierce County, and Washington State ferries. And it focuses on the collective vision for public transportation and a large number of rail, bus, and ferry projects that are scheduled. Again, the impacts of 976, we don't know. They did discuss the collaboration to enhance the access of ORCA cards for customers with low-income youths and making payments for transit easier for everyone. And then finally, we received a report on PSRC's Transit Transportation Demand Management Special Needs Transportation Work Program. So they're right now undergoing data collection from stakeholders for travel demand management and special needs transportation areas to provide more current data, and that will create an updated baseline for these elements and help inform future needs and opportunities analysis in the next regional transportation plan. One thing that was discussed again was that special needs transportation will be hit very, very hard with I-976. It will be devastating for special needs transportation, and hopefully there'll be a way to backfill it, but it's going to hurt that population particularly hard. That's it.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you. I've just got a couple, brief update from PIC. A lot of conversation around the SCA legislative agenda, which we kind of mirror metro mobility framework. Deputy Mayor was just speaking of transportation. We don't know what effects that the I-976 will have, but probably will be pretty robust. There was some discussion around the King Conservation District rates and charges, what those new rates are, and interestingly around the elections for that, the King Conservation Group. There was some conversation around King Waste and Energy Waste Export Feasibility Study. So all the items that I'm listing right now are in the packet from the SCA PIC meeting that I attended. There's some really good information in there that you guys all will have in your email inbox if you take a look at that. Probably the single biggest item that came out of there is the ILA/PDA, which you've heard me speak about several times now, between King County and the City of Seattle, and trying to form a governance or not around the homelessness issue that they have, that we have regionally, but more importantly, that Seattle and King County are forming. So hopefully, we can, as a council, can have an open discussion at some point about it, how we feel about it, either supporting it or not supporting it. But it is a huge issue that is taking over our region, and we need to make sure that we have a position where we stand on homelessness. Pre-PIC this week was, last week was on limits of homelessness enforcement. So interesting conversation around cities can enforce homelessness, and I'm also going to show that PowerPoint presentation. A lot of great information in that package on overview of legal trends on homelessness, anti-camping ordinances, unregulated camps and encampments, vehicles used for habitation, and panhandling regulations. So a lot of great information from MSRC is in that packet. And lastly, NPRSA, which we know is near and dear, were passing a levy. It looks like we are going to have a celebration tomorrow at 6:30 at the Senior Center, so hopefully everybody can come join us for that celebration. The levy was passed for capital projects on the facilities so that we can keep the doors open and maintain senior services within our community. So super excited that we're in the positive right now in that passing. That is my update. Thank you.
Any other committee reports? Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I attended the Parks and Recreation Board Meeting, and I think it's really important to understand that the survey has been done, and there were 2,500 people who responded with the major issues of trails and relationship to the environment and fitness. In that survey, one of the things I thought was pretty interesting was we liked Tracy, and so that was one of the responses. So thanks to Nick Stroup and Tracy Prokowsky, they did an excellent job with this. It will come before the council for some of our decision-making, as we, I think, requested of the city manager asked for something by November 22nd from the council members. Also, I think I asked the Bothell Downtown Management Association about the dog park at the City Hall, and they were very enthused and very excited about it, and I even like it better there, too, so whatever. But have to think about, one little issue is that when City Hall is closed, we still need some restrooms, so it's one of the little issues. But I think as we move forward with the pros plan and what we need to do for safety and for the future projects, we need to talk to our community and be sure that as we look at our budget, we can do what we need to do. So I think our parks are critically important to our citizens, and we need to do a good job making sure that we support them as well. That's my part.
Okay, moving on to the visitor comment. Let's see. Each person addressing the council will give his or her name in an audible tone of voice for the record. Unless the council grants further time, shall limit the address to three minutes. No person other than the council and the person having the floor will be permitted to enter into any discussion, either directly or through a member of the council without the permission of the mayor. And the first sign-up is Kanal Sinha.
Hi, my name is Kanal Sinha. I'm a high school student from the Overlake School. I've been working with Zero Waste Washington, and this is about the reusable bag ordinance, the prohibition on single-use carryout plastic bags. So what I want to talk about here today in the three minutes is just that plastic bags, almost in our overuse of plastic, seems to be a paradox. I mean, it's made from a substance that takes millions of years to form, and then we use it for a product that we throw away within just a couple of minutes. So not only does that not really make any sense, we find that the overuse of plastic doesn't actually help anyone. It's polluting our ecosystem and harming our wildlife, which I find to be a very important part of Washington State. Actually, when my family moved to Washington, the notion of an evergreen state was part of what attracted them there. And so when I, you know, walk through the city or a town and I see plastic bags just lining the streets, it's not great for me. It's also not helping anyone just because it clogs up our recycling facilities. It, first of all, makes them more inefficient, and it's also a logistical headache. But probably the most important impact we see is it just eats up barrels and barrels of oil, which of course is not only consuming a finite resource, but it's also contributing to climate change. Now, I sympathize with the city council. You have a lot of bills to deal with, but I think that this is one that we should try to prioritize, just because speaking to students or other people my age, I've found overwhelming support. This is one of those weird issues that it seems regardless of political affiliation, there seems to be a strong affinity, just because the youths tend to care more about climate change, and also just the notion that we need to not pollute our rivers and our streams is something that everyone seems to agree with. So we find that, again, we should try to consider this bill. Of course, we can try to shelve it for later, but if we do that, I know that not everyone will be happy, and especially the youth that I've talked to, again overwhelmingly strong public support. And that seems to make sense just because it's our generation when we grow up and we get jobs and we get married. It's us who are going to have to clean up all this pollution, and it's us who are going to have to deal with the negative ramifications. So again, I'd urge you to really consider this reusable bag ordinance.
All right, thanks. Next is Holly, I think it's a C-H, Chisa? Is that right? All right.
My father's a physician, and I inherited his handwriting, so my apologies. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Holly Chisa, and I'm here on behalf of the Northwest Grocery Association. I represent the larger retail grocery stores here within the city. I'm actually based in Thurston County, and I live in a plastic bag ban. And we are here today in support of the ordinance that's before you. We appreciate that the language recognizes that that T-shirt plastic bag comes from a store, whether it's a hardware store or a grocery store, wherever it comes from, is that same plastic bag. So you do recognize that all retailers would be impacted by this, and we appreciate that. We also appreciate that there's language, the exemption language, that we strongly support, which keeps us out of trouble with the Health Department. It addresses things like raw meat, fresh produce. We want to have barriers, and so we appreciate that you do provide an exemption for those kind of conditions. The one piece in this ordinance that's a problem for us is that in 040, you specifically prohibit us from giving out a plastic bag unless it's a part of those exemptions. The problem we have is there is a massive bag shortage right now of paper bags. We are waiting about six months for bags. It could be longer for a smaller independent retailer, and without the ability when we run short to be able to default and charge for a 2.25 plastic bag, we may run into a scenario where we don't have a bag. And that's just what we're dealing with right now in the marketplace. We want the local paper bag guys to make more bags. We would love to buy more of their product, but right now there is a realistic shortage, and we have to be real about that as we look at these ordinances across the state. And we would ask you that you would allow for a 2.25 milliliter bag to allow us to still have those available to charge, but to still have those available for consumers. I'd be happy to take any questions, and I'm here if you need any additional information throughout the evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, Catherine's the first name. Is it McComb? Oh, that's an H, huh? Check that out.
And good evening. I'll keep it short, so I just want to, I have bronchitis, so I lost my voice, so I apologize I sound like a man. But my name is Catherine Holm, and I'm with the Washington Food Industry Association. So we represent the independent grocery and convenience stores. So we're kind of like your smaller mom-and-pop stores. There are two things that are needed for a plastic bag ban to be successful, and that is a fee, and we need an alternative bag. So just going off of what Holly just said, we appreciate that there is a fee, and that's awesome. However, we need that alternative bag. The reason why we need it is because, as Holly said, we have a paper bag shortage. So we are waiting, I think we're at like somewhere between 12 and eight months waiting for a bag. So if you go into your grocery stores right now, you'll see on the actual paper bags, you don't have logos, or if you do, it's like very minimal. And the reason is because they are at capacity, putting as much bags through because there are plastic bag bans nationally, all throughout. And so it's taking us a long time for us to get those bags. There are only four paper bag manufacturers in the United States, and so until there are more paper bag manufacturers, we need that 2.25-mill alternative plastic bag. And it's a really thick plastic bag. It's not like a normal, like very thin one, so you can reuse the bag. So it's also a reusable bag, just like a paper bag is. Again, I'll be here, so if you have any questions, just let me know, and you should have received an email with me that kind of showcases more about our thoughts about it, as well as bag costs. So thank you.
Thank you. Next is Courtney Kaler.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Courtney Kaler. I'm here representing SCG North Creek Place to comment on your Agenda Item Number Seven. First, I would like to express SCG's appreciation to city staff and the city attorneys who worked with SCG for many, many months to reach the agreement that you have before you tonight. SCG looks forward to doing work in Park Creek as soon as possible and to working cooperatively with the city moving forward out into the future. I have with me today signed originals of the agreements that you have before you and hope that you will authorize the city to sign them as well as my client. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next is William Root.
There's an upcoming book sale this week, Friday and Saturday. As you can see from the graphic up there, we have these book sales at the Bothell Library twice a year, May and November, and these sales, the proceeds from these sales benefit the local library, which, as many of you will know, the, most libraries have very tight budgets, so every little bit helps. Now, there are actually two days of sale. The first, the first day is on Friday, this coming Friday, between 5:00 and 7:00 p.m. there's a members-only sale. Anybody can be a member. You simply need to pay, here we go, $5 at the door, $5 for an individual. If you have a family with three or more people, you can pay $15 for the entire family. And as I said, you can pay, you can pay at the door. On Saturday, the sale is open for the public. Anybody can come. The prices are very generous. Typically, a paperback book might be 50 cents, and a hardbound book might be a dollar. There are exceptions to that. If we see a book that, you know, has more value, we'll put a price in it that's maybe a little more. But anyway, we also are looking for volunteers to help us set up, and we start at noon on tomorrow, Wednesday. And the biggest help we could use from the community is on Saturday at the end of the sale, we close the sale down at 4:00, and the, between 4:00 and 5:00, we take down all of the books, all the tables of books, and it's a frenzy getting all of those books back into boxes. And if you don't believe me, come there at 4:00 on Saturday afternoon, and you can see for yourself. Anyway, I welcome everybody, the community, the city council, the mayor, to please join us and hope to see you there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Heather Trim.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Heather Trim. I'm Executive Director of Zero Waste Washington. We're a statewide nonprofit trying to make trash obsolete. We are really happy that you are considering a bag ordinance tonight, and just so you know, this is the bag that you would be banning. It's called a T-shirt bag. It's the thin plastic bag that's about .5-mill thick. A mill is a thousandth of an inch. The City of Tuckwilla last night voted to pass the 36th ordinance in Washington, so if you were to vote on a bag ordinance, you would be number 37, and a court has voted on one, two weeks ago. You, by the way, have a terrific staff. It's been a real pleasure working with them. They are very proactive and are really, may I say, detailed-oriented. You have previously received, Councilwoman, I can't say your last name, Davina, received over 400 signatures, and we have had very strong public support as we've been working in the community over the past year. I wanted to point out one thing that a lot of council members ask, which is about enforcement. There is, of course, an enforcement section in the ordinance, but we, even though we're an advocacy group, do not really want you to do a ton of enforcement. We see this as something that happens organically over time as people are getting used to it and it becomes sort of part of the norm. And to date, we don't know of any enforcement that's happened on any of the plastics ordinances in Washington yet, so we really feel like this is something that is not going to be a lot of staff time and sort of more like a friendly call, because for one thing, it's very evident. If you don't have, if you're not in compliance, the customers know, and they'll make a call into staff, and then staff just does a friendly telephone call, hey, don't forget we have a bag ordinance in place. To reiterate the three reasons why we are particularly in favor of this is, one is the impact on wildlife, as you heard eloquently expressed by Kanal earlier. Two is the issue of the bags wrapping around the rollers at the recycling facility, which is why you and King County and Seattle are all banning plastic bags in the waste stream come January 1, in the recycling stream, because it gums up the machine. They have to close the entire line down when the bags clog up every day, at least one hour for every eight-hour shift of work. And then lastly is the issue of litter in the community and in, just in general in our waterways, because they're lightweight and they blow around. I guess that's the last thing, other than really happy for you to do this because we really do want to have statewide consistency, and there is a statewide bill that may pass this year. It did not pass, it almost passed last year. And I'm here all evening in case you have technical questions when you get to that point of the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Stefan Klassen.
My name is Stefan Klassen. I work at Cascadia College, just down the street. I'm the Assistant Director of Sustainability there, and I'm here in support of the plastic bag ordinance as well. One of the larger things that we try and encourage both for you to Bothell, with my coworker who's not here tonight, and myself, for our students, to try and show about why Bothell and why our community matters for sustainability, and having a community that, you know, supports further engagement, further removal of plastic bags is one of the things that we try and encourage people to push forward. But speaking as a citizen, just scientifically, one of the larger concerns with single-use plastics as we see further and further is more and more evidence showing that these plastic bags do degrade into smaller parts over time and do end up in things like seafood in our, in our water systems, and have been shown to even show up in our drinking water recently. And these plastics are relatively toxic, and they do release toxins into our water. So it is a greater concern for the future generations and our own human health eventually. So having more and more counties and more and more areas starting these plastic bag ordinances is truly an important thing, I think, for our people and our citizens. Thanks.
All right, thank you. That's the last person that signed up. Does anybody else want to provide public comment? Come once, twice, public comment? Nope, okay. We're going to go to executive session. We have a litigation, litigation present to RCW, 42301101I, and we're going to be in executive session for?
15 minutes.
You promise?
No.
All right, so we're going to go to executive session until 7:10 p.m. We're planning to take action when we return. We're into AB 19-188 settlement agreement, access easement agreement, and maintenance covenant with SCG North Creek Place LLC related to the 120th Avenue Northeast flooding and Park Creek channel maintenance. City Attorney, or who do we got here? Yeah, City Attorney.
I'm a bit of a loss for words. This is something that we've discussed in executive session that I'm not able to really discuss in length, but essentially, for a number of years, the community's been complaining about the flooding that's existed on 120th Avenue. We were working with the property owners, SCG North Creek Place LLC, and were ultimately able to come to a resolution that we think will be a permanent fix. So we appreciate the patience of the community as we've kind of gone slog through this process. But the agreements are in front of you, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I think we're fully informed. Is there a motion? Deputy Mayor.
I move the recommended action to authorize the city manager to enter into the above referenced agreements to include all outstanding litigation with SCG and move forward towards restoration of the channel to prevent future flooding of 120th Ave Northeast.
Second.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Agnew. I'll read again, authorize city manager to enter into the above referenced agreements to conclude all outstanding litigation with SCG and move forward towards restoration of the channel to prevent future flooding on 120th Avenue Northeast. Is there any discussion on this motion? Deputy Mayor.
I'd just like to speak to my motion. So this is a really momentous day. This is a problem that we've been dealing with for many seasons, flooding on 120th, and this should resolve in the next couple of years. The fish window's open in July, so we'll have to deal with another winter of flooding on 120th. But I wanted to commend staff on their perseverance in solving this issue. It's been a long time coming, and I'm really proud of us for getting reimbursement for our litigation fees. That's a huge win for us, and I appreciate SCG coming to the table and agreeing to resolve the flooding and maintain the property. So thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, go ahead, place your vote. Passes unanimously with Councilmembers Zorn's absent and excused. We are on to our next item of business, which is the consent agenda. So we have had two items pulled from consent. Are, I'll say what they are, AB 19-191 and AB-19193 have been pulled. Is there a motion to approve the remainder of the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Agnew. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, place your vote. Passes unanimously with Councilmembers Zorn's absent and excused. We've got the first one, AB 19-199 Resolution Adopting the 2020 User Fees. This was pulled by the Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. So I wanted to point out on page four of the Agenda Packet that we charge a fee for solar photovoltaic power systems, and given that one of our top goals for city council is sustainability, I thought it was worth asking staff about perhaps waiving the solar voltaic, photovoltaic power systems fee. So we have information in our packet, I believe, that talks about, that we've had approximately 20, correct me if I'm wrong, City Manager, we've had approximately 20 of such projects in the last 10 years, so it's two a year, so we're not making gobs of money off of it. And I realize it's probably not a huge incentive to someone putting in a solar photovoltaic system, but I think it's, it would be indicative of our goals and our, where our hearts are to waive the fee for solar photovoltaic power systems. So that is my, that's my ask. I'd love to hear what fellow council members think.
Any further discussion on the gen item? We need a motion? Oh, we have a discussion, Councilmember Olson?
Yeah, I think, I mean, it goes in line with our community or our council goals of being responsible for the environment and looking for ways to be greener and just more thoughtful for the environment. So I think it would be something that we could look into or investigate a little further.
All right. Any other discussion or motion?
I'll make the motion. I motion that we pass the fee schedule as, as, I don't know, listed, and with the exception of waiving the solar photovoltaic power systems fee.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the, let's see here, I put this together. Sorry. Prove the proposed resolution. Approve the proposed resolution adopting user fees for 2020 without the fees for the solar, whatever we call it, panels. Solar panels. Is there any discussion on the motion? Councilmember McAuliffe.
I'm sorry, I just was not able to have a full discussion of this agenda bill for the fees. And so I'm just not going to go pro or con, but I'd like to just reserve my vote if I could, because I just haven't had enough time to really go over it. I'm sorry, I was supposed to have a meeting with the city manager this morning, but because of my husband's concerns that I had to take him to emergency, so I didn't get a chance to really review this. So I'm just going to withhold my vote.
Or abstain? Yes. What we normally do? Okay.
Withholds, abstains.
All right. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, place your vote. Let's see, passes, is that a pass? How's that work? There's six present, that's an ordinance. That's tough. That's why I'm looking at you, City Attorney. Believe you need a majority of, you need four, right?
You do for six, you would need four for the majority. The abstention is what, no, you need four for majority, you didn't get four. So it does not pass with the amendment to waive the, whatever Deputy Mayor said in terms of the waiver of the, the non-waiver of the photovoltaic fee.
Solar panels. Right?
Yes.
All right, cool. All right, so motion fails, is there another motion?
I move the original motion.
The staff recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded to, sorry, that's annoying of me, approve the proposed resolution adopting the user fees for 2020. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, place your vote. Replace, place your vote again. And that passes you, oh wait, sorry, passes one, two, three, four, five in the affirmative, one, Councilmember McAuliffe and the abstention and Councilmember Zorn's absent and excused. Next item pulled was AB 19-193 supplemental number five for the construction engineering services, non-motorized bridge at Parkaboth Landing. Councilmember Olson.
Jacobs Engineering is my current employer, so I just wanted to be transparent and upfront with that and recuse myself from the vote.
That's just an abstention, right? They're just saying you need to like not vote. I don't think you can not vote.
It's not an abstention, he's recused himself, he cannot vote. So there will only be five votes to determine the passage of this item.
Awesome, that was awesome. Thank you. Much better than last time. Okay, so, is there a motion?
Move the recommended action.
It's moved by Councilmember Agnew, seconded by Councilmember McNeil to authorize the city manager to enter into a supplemental agreement number five in substantially the same form as presented with Jacobs Engineering Incorporated, the amount of $50,481 for construction engineering services for the non-motorized bridge at the Parkaboth Landing project. Any discussion on the motion? Except Councilmember Olson. Seeing none, place your vote. That passes unanimously with Councilmember Olson abstaining, Councilmember Zorn's absent and excused. We are moving right along to public hearing, AB-19198 School Impact Fees for the North Shore School District. So I am officially opening the public hearing. We had a, I don't know how you put this, the school district was not able to come tonight due to unforeseen circumstances, so I need a motion to continue the public hearing.
I move that we continue the public hearing to the December 3, 2019 City Council Meeting and defer consideration or adoption of the proposed ordinance until that time.
It's been moved by Councilmember Agnew, seconded by Councilmember McNeil to continue the public hearing for the school impact fees, it is December 3, 2019 City Council Meeting and defer consideration or adoption of the proposed ordinance until that time. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, place your vote. Passes unanimously with Councilmembers Zorn's absent and excused. And we are on to next public hearing, AB 19-199, King County, Snohomish County, oh, sorry, Kings Snohomish County Property Tax Levy Ordinance. And we have, I'm officially opening the public hearing and we have, skipped right by it. Oh, Maureen, there you are. Hi. Where's Chris? I'm sorry, Director Bothell.
He owes me.
That's right. You have a floor.
For, anyway, good evening, Mayor and Council. For policy consideration this evening is to consider implementation of a 1.68% increase for the city's regular statutory levy, which includes the voter-approved safe streets and sidewalks and the public safety levy lid lifts. Property tax is the city's second-largest general fund revenue source and funds city services, including police and fire, community development, parks and recreation, emergency management, and general government operations. The value of the annual property tax levy is limited by state law to increase by up to 1% per year, plus the value of new construction and any voter-approved levy lid lifts and/or excess property taxes. The city's maximum regular levy limit for property taxes is determined annually by the county assessors. The allowable increase for 2020 is 1.68% or $358,296 from the previous year. In addition, current property taxes in the amount of $1.62 million are to be levied to pay principal and interest on the general obligation bonds that were issued in November of this year for the purposes of paying the costs of constructing two new fire stations. The estimated 2020 combined levy rate of $1.95 per thousand of assessed value is up from the 2019 combined rate of $1.90 per thousand or increase of 5 cents per 1,000 of assessed value. This difference equates to approximately $24.22 for a $5,000 home. The property tax levy ordinance are due to the counties by November 27 and staff recommends to adopt the city's 2020 property tax levy ordinance as proposed for King and Snohomish Counties. And with that, I'll turn it back to Mayor and Council and welcome any questions you may have.
So I don't have any, thank you. I don't have any buddy on the sign-up sheet. Does anybody want to give public comments or public hearing, so anybody can give a public comment on this item? No, once, twice, okay. Is there any questions from Council? Deputy Mayor.
So I had asked earlier if we knew what percentage of each dollar paid in property tax is Bothell's amount. And I think you had said that you had the 2018 numbers, but not the 2019. So I wondered if you could speak to that.
Sure, let me pull that up here. I do, I had the 2018, we don't have final numbers yet from the counties for 2020, but I know 2019 did not change that much in the percentages. Let's see what we got here. So looking at a home that was valued at $500,000, we, you know, besides the city taxes, property owners also pay for state, school district, hospital, library, depending upon what area you're in. And Bothell's portion of their taxes, which was, the total tax was, I was estimating on this property was at $5,500. Bothell's portion was just under 15% of the total. The largest portion was the school district, which was a little over 33%. Washington, the state tax was almost 27%. And then you have all the other little districts, but those are the three main percentages that make up the majority of their taxes.
Thank you. So for each dollar you pay, 15 cents goes to Bothell.
Right, yeah.
And that includes police and fire and public works and parks.
I do have a breakdown for this year, it's for 2020, that might be helpful too, to also put it in perspective. When I said the increase is basically 5% or 5 cents per 1,000 for a house valued at $500,000. Just a reminder that in 2018 and 2019, property owners did not pay any more on the public safety police bond because that was paid off for those two years. And last year, we added the public safety levy. We also had the street levy. And then this year, we now are adding the bonds, the levy for the bonds. And with all of that, we are still just 5 cents over the 1,000. It breaks up to like, for the street levy, it breaks down to 39 cents per 1,000. The public safety levy, 40 cents per 1,000. And these are all down from last year's rate. And then you add the bond, which, because we got good interest rates on those bonds when we issued them, is 13 cents per 1,000, which is $65 that makes up that portion of the 900. So for all of that, you get all those services. And we gave a little spiel on finance to some Girl Scouts that were in City Hall earlier this week, I think, or last week. And how do you make finance fun? You know, we were talking about taxes and I said, you know, how many have a phone? How many have a cellphone? And my cellphone's kind of old, so I haven't looked for a while, but I looked and it's, you know, a cellphone, like a new iPhone, it's about $900 to $1,000. And I said, about the same amount for $900, you get police to come when you call, fire when you need them, your street's done. And so that's an analogy that they could relate to and I kind of like that analogy as well. So.
Thank you so much for putting it in perspective.
Any other questions of staff or is there a motion? Councilmember Olson.
So I know you mentioned real quick about we got some reduction in the interest rates, I think because of our improved bond rating. Could you speak a little bit? Or our credit rating?
Sure, the credit rating that Moody's just gave to us, which was an increase in a credit rating of an A8, A1. Because of our, the way we looked, the credit rating they gave us, it was a very competitive bond when it went out to be issued. And because I think of that, we got a good interest rate of 2.4%. This is the first year in 2020 that we'll be making the payments for that bond and we'll do that for 20 years.
All right, no, that, I mean, that sounds really great that, you know, our hard work and perseverance through fiscal management and improving our credit rating really helped with getting that improved interest rate on it. So, I mean, it just makes it.
It feels like all your hard work is paid off for the citizens, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, less expensive over the life of the bond and everything.
It's a good thing, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or motion? What are we doing down here? Good?
Can move it.
Deputy Mayor.
I move the recommended action to adopt the city's 2020 property tax levy as proposed for King and Snohomish Counties.
Second. It's moved by the Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Agnew to adopt the city's 2020 property tax levy as proposed for King and Snohomish Counties. Is there any discussion on the motion? Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be supporting the motion. I just wanted to bring, say that thank you for explaining to us the taxation. It's important that we all understand as a community that the cost of things continues to grow over time. And the most important thing that I heard this year was the fact that we need to be, have public safety. Police, fire are very important, near and dear to us, safe streets and sidewalks is also important. So the community has spoken and I look forward to continuing to work hard over the next couple of years on our budget and being fiscally responsible, but it's important to know that things do cost more and somehow they have to get paid for. So while I hate raising taxes, it's something that we need to also think about how to keep our community safe.
Further discussion on the motion? I just want to pile on to that, that it's never fun to do this, that we raise taxes on ourselves because we live in the community. I think it's important to point out though, 1%, it doesn't keep up with the cost of providing the services in which we provide the community. For quite a few years, we went without the 1% increase during the Great Recession and that's why we had to go, basically why we needed to go out for levies for our operating budget. So we would rather do it this way where it's just an incremental increase per year. But again, we needed those levies to catch up from past, or passing on it in the past. So I'm going to support this and I supported it every year basically since I've been here, but I encourage Council to continue supporting it because it really does pile up over time if you, if you don't take the 1% increase. Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. And I will be supporting this, but I do want to register my concern that we have been probably one of the cities that have the highest rate of increase for our taxes over time. And we also may be looking at a budget crisis in the next few months. And so while I'll be supporting this, I am concerned about what we're going to ask our citizens to do to support us, because we will be in a critical position in the next few months.
All right, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, place your vote. That passes unanimously with Councilmembers Zorn's absent and excused. We are on to, where are we at? There we go, AB 19-200. I don't know if anybody knows that, but the second number is the 200th item that we've taken up as a council this year. AB-2, no wait a second, I screwed that up. No, I didn't. There it is, ordinance establishing the EMS levy in Snohomish County, portion of Bothell for the 2020, for 2020. And I believe we still are working with Director Bothell's fill-in.
Right.
Maureen Wards.
So.
Or Shoals, sorry.
So first, you have to adjourn to the EMS board?
Oh, I hate this part.
Yeah. So the, the public hearing, the process is located in your agenda bill.
Thank you. That's a fun game we do every year. Where is that?
It is on.
Is it before the ordinance?
Just before the ordinance, yes.
Okay, here we go. I got it. All right, so City Council is officially adjourned and now we are coming back together as the EMS board. I don't need to do anything else.
You're now the chair and you have to open the.
I'm the chair of the EMS board. The chair of the EMS board is now opening, I'm officially opening the public hearing. There's a staff presentation.
Yes, there is. So policy consideration for this evening is to implement a 1% increase in the emergency medical services or EMS levy covering the Snohomish County portion of Bothell for 2020. Bothell Urban EMS District was created in 2005 to fund EMS services in the Snohomish County portion of Bothell. Levy for EMS services in the King County portion of Bothell is funded through the King County levy. The current six-year voter-approved levy for Snohomish County runs through 2023. The estimated EMS levy for 2020 on a $500,000 home amounts to $123, which is down approximately $30 from the 2019 rate. The biennial budget assumes a $1.5 million in EMS revenues for 2020. And the levy ordinance is due to Snohomish County by November 27 and staff's recommendation is to adopt the city's 2020 EMS property tax levy as proposed for Snohomish County. And I'll turn it back over to the EMS.
I'm the EMS board chair, yeah. Don't mess that up. Okay, so public comment, I have nobody signed up for public comment on, oh wait, let me make sure. Yeah, nobody signed up for public comment? Does somebody want to give public comment? No, okay. So is there any discussion or questions on this levy from the EMS board? Seeing none, is there a motion? Well, we have a question, all right. EMS Board Member McNeil.
Sorry, Chair, I called you Mayor. So can you real quickly just go back over the 1% and the decrease versus increase? I missed that.
A couple factors make the, that make the change in whether, you know, it's 30 cents or 23 cents. Most of it has to do with what the county does with assessed value. And a couple of things with that is, you know, if a property value increases or decreases accordingly, and the more construction that we have in the area where we have more property, more homes being built or any type of construction also then adds and basically dilutes that pie so that it's spread over all of the residents of property owners, which may reduce. reduce, as in this case, about, what did I say, $30 about from last year?
To 23 or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, you're growing, so the growth kind of washes it out, is how I'm understanding that?
So there's more people paying for that service.
Gotcha.
So you may not have to pay as much. But it also depends upon how much change was in your own property, too, your value of your property.
Right. But the EMS, the service actually could potentially increase, but there's a decrease because of the amount of people, correct? Am I saying that right?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
You got it.
Thank you.
I have a quick question, too. So this EMS levy is to match the Medic 1 in King County? Is that something I made up in my head, or is that true?
Yes.
So because the people in Snohomish County get served by King County Medic 1?
Correct.
Okay. I don't know if that was, is that right? You know better than I was.
Yeah, King County has a King County Medic 1 levy, and that levy just passed with, I think, around an 80% yes vote. And that levy will provide paramedic services for King County. It'll also provide funding for each local department for equipment and personnel. And Snohomish County, it's just a different levy source. You know, it's it's the same system, just crossing a different border. But once they cross that border, they don't get the same funding. Did that make sense?
I think so. So when you're in Snohomish County, you have a Medic 1 vehicle come to your house?
Absolutely. You have a Medic 1 vehicle come to your house. And in a majority of the times, it's going to be one of the vehicles out of Bothell Station 42.
All right. Fire's not here. We couldn't.
No, I can say almost anything.
We can say whatever we want. I like it. All right. Is there a motion for the EMS Board?
I adopt the city's 2020 property tax levy as proposed for Snohomish County.
It's moved by Councilmember, oh, EMS Board Member Agnew, seconded by EMS Board Member McCullough, to adopt the city's 2020 property tax levy as proposed for Snohomish County. Is there any discussion on the motion? Councilor Agnew?
Who? EMS Board Member Agnew?
Oh, come on, man. Doing the best. I was leaning on you earlier. EMS Board Member Agnew, please.
Well, thank you. Thank you, EMS Board Chair.
Ignore the EMS Attorney over there.
The 1% will pick up some of the funding. We noticed that the EMS community is getting more and more and more call volumes. And with that, it's, there's a little strain on the system. There's no question about that. I think we're going to continue to have that kind of strain and that kind of impact on this community with our growth. We're changing from a bedroom community to a vibrant little municipality. And with that's going to come, come some impacts. I totally endorse this and support this. I think the EMS system that we have here is second to none by far, and I hope we can continue on that vein.
EMS Board Member McCullough?
Thank you. And I just want to say personally that I have seen such wonderful response from our EMS people, from our fire department, from our people who come out to aid, to give aid first aid. And this is really valuable to our community and our citizens, that we have such wonderful service. And the other thing I appreciate so much about our EMS service is the attitude as well. They do such a wonderful job of taking care of people, making people feel comfortable, and assisting in emergencies. So I totally support anything we can do to help them and to make sure that we have this continued service.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, place your EMS Board vote. Passes unanimously with Councilmember Zorn's absent and excused.
EMS Board.
EMS Board Member, sorry. Well, she's not here, so she can't be a Board Member. Jean Zorn is not here, so we're going to move, the EMS Board needs to now dismiss, and now we're going to reconvene as a city, I'm sorry, it passes, did I say it passes? With, okay. Now we need to reconvene as the City Council. Thank goodness. And we are on to, moving right along. AB 19-201 Public Hearing Wireless Communications Code Amendments. And we have Mr. Our Director Kaderman. We are officially opening a public hearing. You are not Director Kaderman.
Over here, Mayor.
There you go.
This is Ilana Zanna. She's outside counsel that has been working with the city staff on this. She's with Ogden Murphy Wallace. She'll be doing a brief presentation, is also available to answer questions from the council regarding this. And then staff will have a little bit of follow-up regarding the letter that you received today that is part of the public record. And after public comment, we can discuss those items.
Good evening. My name is Ilana Zanna. I'm with Ogden Murphy Wallace. I've been working with the City of Bothell for about 10 to 12 years on your franchises, wireless and wireline telecommunications. I'm here tonight to speak with you about small wireless facilities. Some of you may remember that my partner, Scott Snyder, came out maybe about a year ago, a little less than a year ago, to discuss small wireless facilities with you. I have pictures. I'm happy to go over any questions you have, comments you have. You want more information about what these look like? I'm happy to do so. I do recognize, though, you have a very packed agenda, so I'm going to go through this pretty fast, unless you do interrupt me with some questions or comments. So just brief overview, it's a picture I stole from AT&amp;T. It shows a diagram between the differences between a macro facility and a small cell facility. Macro facilities are the ones that you traditionally see. They're the top hat style or the type that might be attached to a Safeway or to an apartment building. They're rather large, sometimes between 100 and 125 feet, typically outside the right-of-way, though in Bothell, there are a couple in the right-of-way. Small cells, typical range is about 25 to 50 feet, ideally about 30 feet is where you'll put the small cell antenna and its equipment. So they're ideal for utility poles and light poles within the right-of-way. And that's where small wireless facilities typically are set. So this picture, as you see, just shows kind of the dimensional differences. Small wireless facilities are actually typically smaller in terms of their antenna size, as well as in terms of their equipment size. So a brief history, in September 2018, the FCC issued an order regarding small wireless facilities. And just to backtrack just slightly more, in January 2016, the City of Bothell joined a consortium of cities to look at small wireless facilities within Washington State. So the City of Bothell has been thinking about small wireless facilities for quite some time. With the FCC order, we adopted an interim zoning code in January 2019 that was led by my partner, Scott Snyder, and city staff. In March 2019, the Planning Commission developed standards for small wireless facilities in the Downtown Design District. The picture to the right here is part of those designs that they adopted, and they're actually within the Bothell Design and Construction Standards that were put together in April 2019. If you look at the back of the Bothell Design and Construction Standards, you'll see more than just this poll. I put this poll in here just as as a sample of what's included. There's about four or five designs in there, and they are specific to the decorative light standards in the Downtown Design District. So a lot of questions I receive from city councils and citizens is, this is all about 5G, right? We see newspaper articles about 5G almost on a weekly basis. If anybody reads Geekwire, it's constantly in Geekwire blog articles. We see tweets about 5G. But no, it is not just about 5G. It is also about 4G. It's also about the current technology here. And the designs we're seeing right now are the current build-out and designs for 4G. So if you drive down the street in Bellevue or Seattle, you're going to see 4G deployment, not 5G right now. We are setting it up through the code and it's to accommodate 5G. So when 5G does come out, the City of Bothell, along with other cities within Washington, will be prepared for that. But this is not only about deployment of 5G, it is deployment about 4G and 5G. So the code's quite long, and I thought we'd just go through real briefly what the divisions are. And there's two questions as well that city staff has asked the council's opinion on. So the first is Title 11 updates, and just general housekeeping, housecleaning items to make sure that Title 11 and Title 12 match. The staff is also seeking direction from the council on whether to retain the exemption from public notification that the council adopted previously with regard to macro facilities. Division 1 of the new code, this is Chapter 1211, deals with macro facilities. We call them WCF within the code. So small wireless facilities are excluded from the definition of WCF, which is wireless communication facilities. So Division 1 is talking about those large top-hat towers or installations attached to buildings. It's not talking about small wireless facilities. We made some general amendments and updates, but for the most part, we tried to just keep with existing code. You'll see, though, there's a lot of underlining and strikeout because we did a reorganization of that code. So a lot of the language in there is the same from the original code, just reorganized, but also we did update it. Division 2 deals with the small wireless facilities. So this is the wholly new division. We talk about the new permit process. We talk about general aesthetic requirements. Here's where we have another policy question to council, which has to do with site-specific agreements. That's going to occur when a wireless provider requests to cite a small wireless facility on a new pole or new physical infrastructure in the right-of-way, and how the city can deal with that. Division 3 deals with what's called eligible facility requests. So those are non-substantial modifications to an existing wireless communication facility. And Division 3 tracks the federal requirements that were adopted in 2015. They're fairly standard, and actually, the code here adopted, for the most part, a national standard of these eligible facility request requirements that track the actual FCC requirements. General 4 are generally applicable requirements to both wireless communication facilities, again, those big macro towers, and the small wireless facilities. A lot of questions we get are what about 5G and RF admissions? Assuming many of you may have received a template email that came through with people who were concerned about 5G emissions. That email came across the desks of many city council members nationwide. So the answer to that is that federal law prohibits local regulation of RF emissions. What we can do, and what the City of Bothell does do, is require that any wireless communication facility or small wireless facility maintain the FCC requirements. So we do require an RF admission study to validate that they are in compliance with the FCC rules. Other than that, the city can't actually pass its own requirements on RF admissions. What it can do, though, is suggest that it's the citizens file in the FCC docket their concerns and complaints related to RF admissions, so that the FCC, which is the federal regulatory body that can review these issues, can take action and consider them. So now I'm just going to go through a bunch of pictures very quickly. I call this "Traveling with Ilana Zanna on Vacation." My kids have now been able to recognize small cell facilities, large wireless facilities, cacti that look like wireless facilities, palm trees in San Diego that look like wireless facilities. And in fact, what you don't see in the picture to the left is the man who was looking at me strangely when I got out of my car and took this picture in Seattle. He thought I was taking a picture of him. So luckily for the rest of you and for him, there is no picture of him here. It is just a Verizon small cell facility outside of CenturyLink Stadium. The one to the right is a mobility one in the Capitol Hill Central District area in Seattle. This just gives you an idea of what some of this equipment currently looks like. This is traveling with me to visit my mother-in-law in Los Angeles. Two different types of pole designs. The one on the right, all of the equipment and the antennas are up at the top part of that pole. The one on the left is actually a picture, is a, sorry, is an exact small wireless facility in California. But for those of you who have seen the Bellevue Reporter or seen any of the designs proposed in Kirkland, this is very similar to those designs. It has a very large equipment box at the bottom, as you can see if you look at the comparison between the the equipment box and the car. But then it has all the antennas internal to the pole as you come up top. We went to Las Vegas, and these are pictures of the small wireless facilities in Las Vegas. And this is a T-Mobile design in the U District of Seattle. And so T-Mobile, it has a very unique design and different from the other carriers, and it is actually all in one box. So equipment and antenna in that small little box. Bellevue, so similar design to the Seattle ones that I showed you. This is on a utility pole. This is on a PSE utility pole. So it'll be fairly similar to the designs you would likely see here in Bothell. And just real briefly, thought I'd tell you about what's coming up next. The city has received three applications for franchises currently, one from AT&amp;T, one from Verizon, and one from Crown Castle. The franchises will allow placement of the small wireless facilities within the right-of-way. It will require that they comply with the new code if adopted, and then compliance with the general right-of-way use requirements. And the expectation is that Bothell might start seeing applications at the beginning of next year for small wireless facilities. And with that, I'm happy to flip back to any of these slides, answer any questions, and move forward.
Councilwoman McCullough?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, I noticed that you asked that we.
Councilwoman McCullough, I'm so sorry. I forgot to do the public comment. Will you, will you yield the floor to Agnew for the public comment? Okay. We have people that signed up for this one. It's, the first person is Devendra Maharaj. Did I get that right?
Very close.
Oh, good. You can correct me, too, please.
Good evening. My name is Devendra Maharaj with Verizon Wireless. My office is located in Bellevue, Washington. So Verizon appreciates this chance to provide feedback and collaborate with the city regarding this wireless code. Verizon is in support of the general direction and language that's in this proposed draft. We have a few concerns, which I'll address tonight. You should each have a copy of a comment letter that Wireless Policy Group Kim Allen has sent over to you. She's on behalf of Verizon Wireless as well. So it's just three items I have concerns with. Section 1211, 220A8. This is requiring our construction drawings to show all improvements within a 250-foot radius. This seems unnecessarily large, especially when you consider the size and the impact of a small wireless facility. So the request is that we reduce that to a 50-foot radius to show the improvements on our construction drawings. The next concern is actually in the same section. It requires our construction drawings to show the fiber and power configurations. The engineering required to determine the fiber and power routes at that stage, well, that typically occurs after the city provides the land use approval. And that particular poll is, we have permissions to move forward with. There's significant costs that we incur with those, with that engineering, and it's a cost that we prefer not to incur until we have the city's approval to move forward with a specific poll. So we request that the council consider adding the language, which is suggested in our comment letter. This language has been found acceptable by many other cities in the local area. The language basically states that the construction drawings will include power and fiber configurations to the extent known at the time that the application is submitted, as well as containing how we expect to deliver the fiber and power. Usually, it's very accurate. We considered a prelim UCR Utilities Coordination Report. And then the last item is 1211070C4. This section is regarding the setbacks. This one can prohibit citing a monopole in a residential zone with non-residential items, such as a church, or a fire station, or a park. These areas are often the only acceptable areas to cite a facility. And so right now, we request that the language be revised from a static 100-foot setback to a setback that's equal to the height of the tower or to the lowest engineered breaking point. Excuse me. Definition of a breaking point is a point in which a tower would fold in on itself rather than fall at full length. That that includes all of our concerns. Lastly, if I can just thank the city staff for all the efforts that they've put towards this, they've been very fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Gregory Bush or Bursh. A lot of doctors in the audience today. A lot of doctors in the audience today. Which one is it?
It's Bush.
Bush, okay. Okay.
So, good evening. My name is Gregory Bush. I'm with Wireless Policy Group here tonight on behalf of AT&amp;T. And WPG's offices are in Issaquah, Washington. I'd like to thank Mr. Mayor and the council for the chance to speak. And I would like to, the key takeaway from my comment tonight should be, AT&amp;T is requesting consistency in the code and how the city applies the code to wireless facilities. Specifically, we ask that the city treats public notice at the same it would for any other type-one review. For a type-one review that does not involve SEPA, there's no other process that involves public notice. This is an administrative procedure, and it should be treated as such. And for the second item, I'd like to draw your attention to page 35 of 58 of the proposed code, and in the packet, it's page 255 out of 500, 500 even. This is a comment my counterpart at Verizon brought up. This is the 250-foot requirement to show utilities and other facilities and structures. AT&amp;T asks that this requirement be brought down to 50 feet. And this is a question of scope. For a small wireless facility, we're not going to be digging or affecting anything 250 feet away. Generally, the small wireless facility will only be affecting the immediate area. Anything beyond the connection to the meet-me point, which is where the facilities and the electric and the fiber and communications link up with the third party who provides the fiber and the utilities for power, that is their domain. We can only attest to things that we have knowledge of, as Devendra pointed out. And the scope of the project does not reach beyond essentially 50 feet. And finally, I'd like to draw your attention to page 55 of 60, which is page 273 out of 500. This is section 12.11.420e. Earlier drafts of the code required a near report, which is an analysis of non-ionizing EM radiation from the, it's a comprehensive analysis using the immediate environment. That was revived, revised to the staff's current recommendation, and we recommend that this part be revised to reflect the staff's recommendation of a report provided upfront. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to provide a public comment? Nope. Okay. Councilmember McAuliffe, did you still want to have the floor? Sorry about the interruption.
Given Verizon and AT&amp;T's concerns, I guess I'm kind of a little bit concerned about how we actually will move forward with this. But however, my question was, we were asked as a council to retain exemption from public notification or reinstate notification requirements. And I just wanted to know if there is any response in that, have we heard of the public being concerned about this? Or is this just pretty much the way things are, and it's okay?
So, I can address that, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember McAuliffe. The council removed the requirement for public notification back in 2018, and the basis at that point was because we had a requirement in place, and what we found is that we were not getting any response to that, or any responses that we did get usually had little or nothing to do with the particular issue or the project. And so, it was creating, in some cases, an unrealistic expectation on the part of the public, because there are things that the city just cannot regulate. So, we, at that point, the recommendation from the staff and the planning commission was to treat the wireless communication facilities, the large monopoles and those types, the same as any other type-one use, which does not require public notification. So, the issue before the council tonight is whether to apply that same standard to the small cell wireless facilities as well, or if you want to reinstate that, whether to reinstate it for both types of those facilities.
And, thank you, I appreciate that. But my question would be, have we heard any public concern regarding this exemption?
During this process, no, we have not heard anything.
All right. Thank you.
Other than what you heard tonight from, yes, from AT&amp;T?
Right. Yeah, we haven't heard anything from the public that's opposed to removing, or to applying that exemption, just to be clear. Thank you.
Any further questions from council? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. So, I wanted to go back to the admissions question. So, you're saying we have to defer to FCC rules. Do they actually have rules?
They do.
Okay. Do we know what they are, and if they're sufficient, or...
I can't opine on the sufficiency of them, because I'm not an engineer and RF admissions expert.
That's fair.
Yes, we can access them. Also, if you just go to the FCC website or Google FCC RF Admissions, they have an entire website dedicated to explaining their RF admissions, and they also have regulations on that.
Okay, great. And then, the other question I had was, so it appears that each carrier has their own designs.
Correct.
So, as a city, we just have to, I mean, it would appear that there's very little about this that we actually have control over. And so, we don't really have the ability to have design consistency.
We have, we can create design parameters. They need to be objective. We've attempted to create design parameters that would work for all of the carriers' needs with input from all of the carriers over the last several years, in fact. Creating consistency, the idea of as you look down the street and they're all going to look the same, I think you'll hear that's nearly impossible. We are attempting to get as much consistency as possible, though. So, the downtown design district is a good example of where we've actually outlined, here's the pole, here's where we expect the equipment box to be, here's where we expect the antennas to be, and we've told them in this code, you need to go and look at those Bothell standards and see if you can meet those standards first before you propose a new design. As this matures more, we would expect to see more adoption of other standards within the Bothell code. But very honestly, the LA story is a good example. Those two poles were two blocks away from each other. So, yes, there may be some inconsistency, but we are attempting to drive them towards a uniform design.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then, I wondered, I mean, this has been a process that we've been going through for over a year. I'm going to read into the comments made by AT&amp;T and Verizon, that they've already brought these comments up, and the staff has determined not to go with their recommendations. But I would love to hear your response. It seems like they've had plenty of time to comment, so I'm just wondering if these are new or something that we've already dealt with.
I believe, for the most part, these are new comments this evening. So, I don't think we've dealt with these specifically. They've provided comments throughout the process. We started with the planning commission last, earlier this year, after the interim ordinance was put in place. And we spent, most of the time with planning commission was on the downtown design standards. So, they provided a lot of comment into that. When we got this draft to this point, we sent it out to all the providers and gave them, I think about 10 days, give or take, to comment. So, their comments are based on that latest draft, and there are some provisions that may not have been the same in some of the earlier discussions that we had. And staff is prepared to address those comments tonight if the council would like to entertain them.
I would. I would like to hear what staff's response are to those questions, because I don't, or concerns, because I hadn't heard them before either, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Agnew?
I was just wondering, both the carriers that came up decided that requiring drawings showing all improvements within 250 feet of the pole was unnecessary, and the impact should be within 50 feet. Is there a lot of validity to that?
Validity, again, is an interesting issue there, but I do, we do have a staff recommendation on that request. And if you don't mind, I actually am going to defer to Mike to explain what the staff recommendation is on that request. But I can explain partially what is happening in this general paragraph, which is that when you cite a small wireless facility, it's not just a standalone facility with an antenna on the top and a pole. It has to have wires. It has to have electrical, it has to have fiber. And fiber, the backhaul either needs to come from a fiber line or a microwave. So, it has this other infrastructure. Imagine like sewer or gas in a house. And so, what that question's designed to do is say, we don't want just a pole there that will do nothing. You actually have to hook it up. Show us how you plan to hook it up and what that impact will have on the right-of-way. So, we recognize that when you come, you may not have that fully planned out, and you have third-party partners that have to come to the table, but we want to know that you have a plan on how you're going to get electrical and fiber to that pole. And with that, I'll defer to Mike to directly answer the question we've received. The first question from Verizon.
Thank you. Thank you, Ilana. So, we haven't had a lot of time to look at this, but I think that there could be a reduction there. 250 feet is probably, because it is for the small cell, and as Ilana explained, the scale of those is different than for a monopole. However, it's also important to keep in mind that we need to also look at the context of these facilities, and 50 feet really doesn't necessarily give us that context. So, I think staff would be comfortable reducing the dimensions to 150 feet.
I'd be good with that.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question around the recovery costs for the city. So, what type of costs would we be recovering?
Actual costs. So, this is not a profit area. This is under the FCC order. So, just like with any permit, your actual costs of reviewing that permit. So, if they came in and they took 10 hours of city staff time, you would be recouping 10 hours of city staff time. When we do franchises, you're recouping the cost for the city staff to draft that franchise, negotiate it if necessary, bring it back to council. So, actual costs associated with the citing of the small wireless facilities.
And are the reviewers of those permits the same reviewers that review all of our permits internally?
Yes. And we're, we will be charging on an hourly basis, based on our actual time.
Okay. And you used the word impact when we talked about the impact for installing the fiber or connecting the fiber to the power. In a typical construction build, we have impact fees for schools and roads and all those kinds of things. Are there impact fees that are paid on these sites?
No.
So, the city collects no impact fees, so...
No impact fees. I may have used the word inappropriately in terms of the way cities think about impact fees, but unfortunately, under the FCC order, we are limited to our reasonable objective costs here, which has been interpreted as actual costs. They've actually even set safe harbors for what they think those costs should be. I don't, I don't believe, I haven't actually, when I think about it, I don't, haven't thought about city impact fees, but I, we haven't charged them in the past for macro towers, you know?
I don't believe so.
I don't, yeah. And it's not currently within the code. I don't know that you'd be able to charge them.
Okay. But they do have some form of an impact on the surrounding area. We just don't know what, you can't, you can't put a dollar figure on that?
Correct. They have as much of an impact as a utility pole.
Okay. The next, I guess this is kind of going to be an off-the-wall question, but I figure I better ask it now, otherwise, I'll never get an opportunity to ask it. What is the public benefit to this?
Cell service. So, both cell and data. There's slides on how it'll help power the Internet of Things, and it'll help do, power self-driving cars. It's the technology of the future. So, if you want 5G, the speed that comes with 5G, they need to be lower to the ground, and they need to be at a higher density for the, both the physical traffic, the pedestrian traffic, coming through your city. So, it's, the benefit is having a technologically advanced city, and a city that will have high speeds, so that when you're trying to download Netflix, or you're trying to download a, the YouTube streaming of the city council meeting, you can do so at a high speed.
Okay. So, if, let's just hypothetically say Verizon is a franchisee in Bothell, and I wanted to get on the Internet and technology, a city that has that technology, I would have to go through Verizon to get that service?
No. So, to be clear, all of the carriers expect to deploy throughout the nation. Right now, in fact, in Bothell, you have Verizon, AT&amp;T, and Crown Castle. Crown Castle typically, and I don't want to speak out of place, Crown Castle's actually sitting in the room, but typically works with Verizon, T-Mobile, and Sprint. And so, you would probably see all of the carriers within Bothell. So, if your cellphone right now is, say, Verizon, and Verizon has 5G coverage, you would have 5G coverage. If you're on AT&amp;T, AT&amp;T has 5G coverage, you'd have 5G coverage. Let's say AT&amp;T hasn't deployed out here, you'd have 4G coverage, which is what you have currently. So, it's not a, I can only use Verizon if I'm in Bothell in order to get that coverage. They're looking at what their capacity maps and coverage maps are, and where their need is in order to service their customers. But it's not going to be a monopoly.
Okay. So, this is not, so as an example, I have T-Mobile. And so, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So, all carriers will be offered through the small cells, or just that specific carrier will have an antenna that you can bounce off of?
Any carrier that wants to deploy here will be allowed to deploy here.
Okay.
So, if T-Mobile wants to deploy here, if they have a need to deploy here in order to service their customers, they will be allowed to deploy in the city of Bothell. It is up to them to decide if they have that need.
Okay. So, you could have different providers on different poles, is what I think I...
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, thank you.
So, I have kind of a global comment, and then, I have a few questions. This topic, for years, has been frustrating for me, not because of staff work, and it's not because of our legal work, but because of the carriers. I mean, we've gotten five different copies of the same ordinance with track changes from carriers. So, like, I understand you guys don't work together as carriers, but as a lawmaker, it's super hard to go through 240 pages of information to try to see the differences in what you guys are looking for and what you need or not. And this has happened every time this has come up. And so, in the future, if you guys could disseminate your information from the carriers into like concise bullet points about what it is you want or not, and maybe staff and attorneys can look at them ahead of time. I understand they only had 10, had 10 days or whatever to review it, but, I mean, this is hard for us, I think, to try to make a decision on something. We're being asked to adopt this ordinance tonight, and it's, I don't even know how we could possibly do that at this point. So, I guess my question is, Director Kadam, are you comfortable with the ordinance that you presented to the council as it stands without any changes from the carriers? Is there, is 5G going to implode in the city of Bothell if we pass this ordinance?
We don't anticipate that we'll get a lot of applications until, I think, after the first of the year. So, yes, we stand by the recommendation. As I said, I'm happy to talk to the other comments that have been raised this evening. We have some recommendations on those as well, if the council would like to entertain those changes. But we stand with the recommendation in the draft ordinance. So, there's been a lot of time and effort spent on this, and there has been input from the different providers during most of the process. And Ilana is, as you can tell, is a local expert on this. We've relied on her heavily to make sure that we're putting things in place that are workable, that we have a process in place to deal with these when we start to get those applications.
And may I have a point of clarification, sir?
Sure.
So, we did include the carrier comments. Those comments came in several weeks ago to us. We read them all and incorporated many of those comments already in this draft code.
Okay. So, they've already been addressed in the draft version that you guys presented to us? You just detached theirs?
Correct. We wanted you to be able to see what they had said. We didn't accept all their comments. We made judgment calls and decisions as staff and legal councils to which comments we would accept and which we wouldn't. We just wanted you to be aware of what they were. To be fair, AT&amp;T and Verizon has come tonight with, I've counted three topics that they wanted to highlight to you. The rest of those comments, they have not bullet pointed out loud to you. I'm sure they'd love it if you considered them, the ones that we haven't already, but that's not what they've brought to your attention.
So, those three, you have an answer to?
Yes. The letter that you received, that we received today, yes.
Which I haven't had a chance to read. That's the other thing. Anything you send to us, like, right before the meeting, we don't read, so, I can't.
Yeah. And I'm happy to go over those.
Okay.
I think they're fairly straightforward. So, we've already talked about the one, which is the height, the 250 feet they're asking to reduce to 50 feet, and the staff is not comfortable going to 50 feet, but we would be comfortable with 150 feet. We'd recommend, if the council would like to make that change.
So, it's 150-foot, what do we call that in an amending motion?
That's the...
150-foot review radius, or...
Yes.
It would read, and structures within 150 feet from the proposed site instead of 250 feet.
And that's in 121220a8.
So, we said, reduce the 250-foot review area to 150 feet?
Correct.
In section what?
12120. 1211-220.
Section 1211-220?
Yes.
1211-220? Okay.
And then also in that section, there was a request from Verizon basically explaining that there are certain things they won't have all the information for that we're requesting, but they would be able to, at a minimum, indicate how they would be able to get optic fiber and electric service to the small wireless facility, which was, I think, the main issue that the staff had to make sure that we could get that information. So we're comfortable with the language they're proposing there as proposed.
Is this the letter that they sent in our email inbox?
Yes.
Who is it from?
That was from Kim Allen with the Wireless Policy Group on behalf of Verizon.
I don't believe I received that email. Could you send it to, has somebody here willing to make an amendment motion?
There's a hard copy in your packet. I don't know if you got an email from that. We received an email. I don't know if we sent that directly to the council, but we provided you with a hard copy in your desk packet.
Okay. So we're going off of this thing, because I need somebody up here to do an amending motion so we can bury this thing hopefully tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
However, I can help with that.
Okay. So the number one in their letter, that's the reduction of the footage and your council's recommendation is 150 feet?
The staff is recommending 150, yes.
Okay. Item two?
Item two, recommending accepting the language as proposed in the letter.
That's for setbacks?
No. That's the different additional language in that paragraph at the top of page two.
Oh, on the top of page two?
The underlined language.
Where another party is responsible, blah, blah, blah.
Yes. Correct.
And that's two, is that they identified the section they're talking to? Okay. Same section? Okay.
Yes. And then the next one, item number two in their letter in section 1211070. Staff is comfortable with the revised language with the exception of the additional language they put with a residential use toward the end of that. We would not recommend approving that part of the amendment that they're proposing.
Okay.
And then also be happy to talk to, I think, there was one other item regarding the NEERS report, and I believe we changed that.
Yeah. Greg, I'm actually unclear about AT&amp;T's comment on the NEERS report. Well, if there are other questions, maybe he can pull that up.
So if I could, while we're looking at that, the other items that we had asked for direction from the council on that are in the agenda memo, the one had to do with the public notification. The staff is recommending that we continue with the current practice of not providing public notification.
And that's in the ordinance, right?
That's in the proposed ordinance. That's, yes, that's as proposed in the ordinance. And then the second has to do with granting the, delegating the authority for the staff to approve site-specific agreements. That would come after the council has approved a franchise agreement, which basically covers a lot of the things that the council would need to review and approve. So the staff is also recommending that you delegate that site-specific authority to staff. And that is in the proposed ordinance as well.
Okay. AT&amp;T, you ready? Scoot you up to the mic.
Go ahead.
Greg Bush, Wireless Policy Group here for AT&amp;T. So I'm looking at page 54 of 59 of the ordinance, and this is dealing with section 1211-420, modifications to existing WCFs or SWFs.
So you're asking for a wording change?
Yes. For the consistency with the rest of the revised code. This is removing non-ionizing electromagnetic radiation reports and changing it to RF certification.
Okay. Thank you.
Was our legal counsel in agreement with that change or not?
I think it's a difference without distinction. It's just the same wording for the same idea. So, or different wording for the same idea. Mike, I don't know the exact provision in which we use RF certification. I don't have an issue with using RF certification instead of NEERS report. They're going to submit a NEERS report at the end of the day.
We had settled on the NEERS report, so that's why I've...
Okay.
Are we okay with the existing language? I think the result is going to be the same.
The result's the same.
We would recommend sticking with the language that we have in the draft ordinance.
The draft ordinance?
Yeah. The result will be the same, so I don't see a need to change that.
Cool. And so if we pass this tonight with those three amendments, how long is this going to be good for?
Till the FCC changes the rules again.
Great.
My hope and intend, and all of our hopes and intent, is that you will not see me on this topic for a while, hopefully several years, other than the franchise is coming up in a few weeks. But we are hoping that and intend that this will live and breathe and as the designs evolve, this code can work with those designs. So we tried to create general design standards that their designs can fit into. So our hope is we're not coming back with amendments to this code.
I would just add, we've spent an inordinate amount of time on the staff, part of the staff and with our outside legal counsel to draft something that we think is workable for not only the short term but the longer term, as she said, you know, until the FCC changes the rules on us again. This is a, you know, we always are nervous when the state legislature starts to write local regulation. This is the Federal Communications Commission writing local regulations, and it's even more complicated as a result of that.
Who wants to handle this motion? Deputy Mayor?
I recommend adopting the proposed ordinance, Attachment 1, amending BMC Title 11, Administration of Development Regulations, and amending BMC Chapter 12.11, including regulations for small wireless facilities and wireless communication facilities with the amendment of section 1211-220A8 to change the 250 feet to 150 feet. Do I need to read that whole section?
No. I think you're good there. Council, understand the amendment?
Okay. And in addition, accept the proposed language of adding, "Where another party is responsible for installing such electric and fiber utilities, conduits, cables, and related improvements, applicant's construction drawings will include such utilities to the extent known at the time of application, but at a minimum applicant must indicate how it expects to obtain fiber, if applicable, and electric service to the small wireless facility." In addition, in section 1211070C4, accept the proposed language of setbacks, monopole support, structures, and equipment enclosures shall be constructed with a setback equal to the height of the tower or the lowest engineered breakpoint. If the tower is designed with breakpoint engineering from any exclusively residentially zoned property, including the SSHO and MHP overlay zones. Did I do that right?
You did. I'll second the motion. Moved by Deputy Mayor, seconded by myself. Is there a discussion on the motion? Can't ask questions, though. Do you know that?
I won't ask a question. I'll make a statement.
There we go.
That I believe, I'm making a statement now, that staff was not okay with the residential piece of that. So I will not be supporting the motion based on that one item.
Councilmember McNeil, will you look forward just for a quick second? So she did not include that part that they said to strike? When she read it into the record, Deputy Mayor did not say with a residential use in a response to the staff's recommendation?
Okay. So it's not included?
It's not included.
Beautiful. Okay. All right. So then I will be supporting the motion. But first, I want to just say that my concern is that the staff has done a fabulous job. You've all done a fabulous job on this. There's a lot of work that's gone into this. And my concern is that we've done this work and there's a cost associated with this work. I don't believe we're recovering. So I'm a little concerned with that piece of it. I'm also, to me, in my mind, I also think that we have no control over this. And it's like Big Brother coming into your community and telling you what you can and cannot do, and we really cannot or can or cannot do anything for our community. This concerns me. However, I would want my community to be able to communicate with technology in a natural disaster and things like that. We need to be able to communicate. Hopefully, this will bring some positive influences there. But again, to me, the cost that our city has absorbed in other cities regionally or absorbing for this, to me, I feel should be burdened on the ultimate people that are benefiting from this, which is the providers. Unfortunately, it comes back to us at the end of the day, the users of the service. So thank you for all your hard work and effort on this from both the city as well as you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion on the motion? Deputy Mayor?
I just want to thank staff for your perseverance. This has not been easy. I've been in planning commission meetings. It's arduous, not very fun work. And I agree, I don't like the mandates and I take great exception to the fact that we are not allowed to have really any questions about the health impacts or have that, have any, any impact on our ability to vote yes or no on this.
Any further discussion on the motion? I just want to say that I'm looking forward to 5G service. No, I really am. And I do, I do think it's important that we have the carriers come and have input into it. I just feel like usually that happens ahead of the council meetings, so that the information is given to us in a concise format that, you know, seven just Joe Public people that haven't sat there and written this thing for year after year can digest it and make sure that we're making a good decision for our community. So that's, if you felt a little frustration on my end, that was why. I do look forward to the service and I hope this ordinance just hangs in there for a while and works well for everybody. So any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously with Councilmember Zorn's absent and excused. Hope my cellphone works after the meeting. Okay, we're on to AB 19-20. I won't tell you guys which carrier I use. 19-202, single-use plastic carryout bag restriction ordinance. And we have Emily Warnock, Sabrina Combs, the A-team.
All right. Bear with me while I get this presentation up. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Emily Warnock, Sustainability Assistant, and I am here to discuss the proposed ordinance to restrict the use and sale of single-use plastic carryout bags and answer any questions that you may have. Plastic bags were first introduced to the United States in the late 70s and very quickly took over, so much so that Washingtonians use an average of $2 billion single-use plastic carryout bags each year. And retailers nationwide are spending about $4 billion to provide these bags to customers. Overall, these bags are used for an average of just 12 minutes. So between the sheer amount that we're seeing and the short amount of time that they're being used, it's easy to see how much of a burden they place on our solid waste disposal system. Starting in 2020, on January 1st, plastic bags and film will no longer be accepted in recycling containers throughout King County. And just as a reminder, in Bothell, the Snohomish County portion as well as the King County portion is managed under the King County Solid Waste Disposal System. So there are a couple of main reasons for this. As you can see in this photo, it's very difficult for material recovery facilities to effectively and efficiently sort recyclables due to the sheer amount of plastic bags and film that get tangled around the gears and the machinery. Not only does this slow down the sorting process, Recology estimates that they spend about four hours every night just to manually cut out all of this tangled plastic bags and film. Additionally, this leads to an increase in contamination of other recyclables. So because of the shape and the lightweight of plastic bags, they often get sorted in with recycling streams like paper. And waste management actually spends between $700 and $1,000 per ton of recyclables just to remove the contamination caused by plastic bags and film. Plastic bags and film lead to so much contamination, especially, as I mentioned, in the paper industry. And with recycling restrictions tightening so significantly on the allowable amounts of contaminants by material processors, it is taking far more time and it will end up affecting the costs to customers in the long run. Now, there are take-back locations for plastic bags with grocery chains like Kroger voluntarily eliminating the use of plastic bags in their stores. They are becoming more and more limited, though. I do recommend to everybody, visit plasticfilmrecycling.org to find a location near you that you can take back your plastic bags. All of that being said, Waste Management also estimates that only about 1% of plastic bags are actually returned for recycling. So between no longer being accepted in recycling bins throughout King County and take-back locations becoming more limited, they end up at Cedar Hills landfill. Now, Cedar Hills landfill is expected to reach capacity in 2040. King County also estimates that we're sending about 4,600 tons of plastic bags and film to the landfill every year. So as it fills up, we will need to find another disposal option for the county. And in the long run, the longer that we're able to use the landfill, the less costly it will be to taxpayers. And one of the primary ways that we can do this is reducing the use of single-use plastic Plastic bags and film also have really harmful effects on our environment. As I mentioned, their shape and weight is so easily transported by wind and water that it leads to a lot of increase in litter in our parks, open spaces, and waterways. When the city of San Jose restricted the use of plastic bags in their city, they actually noticed a decrease of 89% of litter in their storm drain systems and about a 60% decrease in litter in waterways and streets. Once these plastic bags are in our environment, they cause a lot of harm to animals as well. So the Center for Biological Diversity estimates that around 100,000 marine animals are killed every year as a direct result of plastic bags in our environment. Now, over time, these plastic bags do slowly break down, but they never fully biodegrade. Instead, they break into smaller and smaller pieces called microplastics. And there are a lot of studies coming out that are drawing a direct line between microplastics and harm to human health. Some of the increased risks are higher cancer rates, disruptions to the endocrine system, impaired immunity, and other ill effects on human and animal health. I also want to note that bioaccumulation is a hazard with microplastics. As we consume shellfish, different seafood and meats that are, that have high levels of microplastics, we then accumulate those, which causes further harm to human health. The good news is that there are alternatives. So paper bags are one option. They are easily recycled. They do decompose if they end up as litter. They can be composted if they are wet or food-soiled. And of course, there are reusable bags in a wide variety of options as well. While it is true that reusable bags do take more resources to produce, they are made to last. So even for cotton bags, which have a higher greenhouse gas emission impact, it only takes a little bit over a year of use for the average person to have a net positive impact on greenhouse gas emissions. So currently in Washington, there are now 36 jurisdictions that have restrictions. Taquilla, as you heard earlier, just added. And some of these include our neighbors like Kenmore, Lake Forest Park, Kirkland, and Everett. The ordinance that we are proposing very closely aligns with the surrounding cities as well as cities across our state. Nationwide, an even greater number of cities have adopted ordinances as well as states and on the worldwide scale, nations. That being said, before we proposed this particular ordinance, we wanted to really take into account what our community thought and what they had to say. In addition to comments voiced at city council meetings and to sustainability staff, we developed a survey of the community that was distributed through social media, postcards to the community, e-news, the city website, and door-to-door outreach to businesses throughout our city as well. Overall, we had 766 responses and 74% of those surveyed agree with restrictions on single-use plastic carryout bags. We also really wanted to make sure we took into account what our business community had to say on this issue. And we presented at the Bothell-Kenmore Chamber of Commerce Business Advocacy Committee meeting to gauge just how much of an impact this would have on our businesses, how many of our businesses were already transitioning, and their general thoughts on the issue. Taking all of this feedback into account, we... Taking all of this feedback into account, we are proposing restrictions on single-use plastic carryout bags. The effective date, based on the feedback we received from the Business Advocacy Committee, is April 22, 2020, for the restrictions to become effective. April 22, 2020 is also the 50th anniversary of Earth Day, which provides a really great opportunity for the city to take action and do something positive for the environment. This April 22 date also provides enough time for us to educate the community, which is a major focus of ours. It provides time for businesses to transition and reuse the current stock of plastic bags that they have. The ordinance also requires businesses to charge $0.10 for each paper bag used. And this does a couple things, namely, the fee is retained by businesses, and that helps offset the cost of paper bags. And it also provides an effective incentive for people to bring their own reusable bags to stores. There are a few items that the ordinance does not include. And this is based on ordinances in our area as well as the feedback we received from the community. I don't recommend bringing your goldfish home from the pet store in a reusable or paper bag. There are applicable situations here where they make sense for bulk items like spices and grains, bags sold in packages for pet waste, garbage, or sandwich bags, and items where dampness or sanitation might be an issue. So those are bags for meat, seafoods, dry cleaning, and newspaper bags. Additionally, purchases made with a voucher or EBT card are exempt from the $0.10 charge for paper bags. Those are issued under programs like Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program and a variety of others. And lastly, nonprofits like food and clothing banks often receive donations in plastic bags, and we don't want to discourage them from reusing those plastic bags. A big focus of ours with this proposed ordinance would be focusing on education and outreach. And staff did develop a community engagement plan to address this. The plan includes social media campaign, materials to help businesses transition, reminders for businesses to post to bring your reusable bags, outreach at events like the upcoming tree lighting, as well as a limited number of reusable bags to provide to those who need them. Overall, I'm asking you to consider approving the ordinance to restrict the use and sale of single-use plastic carryout bags, charge $0.10 for paper bags to help incentivize customers to bring their own reusable bags, reduce our impact to the environment on our local waterways, and improve public health. Thank you for your time. And if you have any questions?
Questions? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you for the presentation. I'm very excited about this. So I had a couple of questions. The exemption for thicker bags, do you have a stance on that?
Yes. So the 2.25 mil bags that we heard about in public comment today have a lot of the same impacts on the environment as these thinner single-use plastic bags. One of our concerns is not only the increased amount of litter, microplastics, and other effects that I mentioned of these thinner plastic bags, but it's also the perception of the community. It's difficult for community members when they go into a store to see thicker plastic bags and not realize that those are also, it's difficult for them to see and really distinguish between why we would allow those and why we would disallow thinner plastic bags. We also are concerned about thinner plastic bags replacing, being replaced by thicker plastic bags, and not having the positive impact to the environment that we are attempting to.
I was also going to say, how do we know that it wouldn't be a loophole? In other words, are we going to start proving, forcing grocers to prove that they can't get paper bags? It seems like it would be ripe for abuse. It's just a wonder, a quandary. And then I wanted to enter into the record the 400 signatures that were gathered in the community. So do I just have Laura take these? Thank you. And thanks to the Zero Waste Washington who collected those. So we know how supportive it is in the community. That was before the survey, which again proves how much support we have from the community. And I wanted to ask, what is recommended for garbage disposal? Like, obviously, people use plastic bags to put their garbage in, to have it collected at the curb. So is there a recommendation for that? I mean, some people do use these thin bags.
Yeah. We got a few comments based on our survey about concerns with what to do with pet waste and to do for small trash liners. There are, as I showed, exemptions. So we recommend reusing produce bags, newspaper bags for pet waste work really well, and bread bags are another great one to line your trash can.
Okay. And then I just wanted to comment. I was in Copenhagen a couple months ago, and they have wastewater facilities that actually can take microplastics out of their water. They have wastewater facilities that have five phases of cleaning that include ozone and other things. And just for reference, we have two facilities in Washington that have three phases of cleaning, and none of them include taking microplastics out of the water. So we have a ways to go. Anyway, thank you so much for your work. I really appreciate it.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm looking at the rules and regulations and ordinance here, and I'm looking at the other cities around us. Is this similar to what they are doing?
This is a very similar proposal to what other cities in our area are doing.
So do you imagine that when I look at carryout bags, do not include so many other, you know, newspaper bags, cleaner bags? Are we eventually going to get there?
A lot of the exemptions are determined by how many alternatives there are currently to those bags. For example, dry cleaning bags, it's really difficult to find an alternative. Newspaper bags, in our rainy climate, it's again difficult to find an alternative. So hopefully, in the future, moving forward, these items would be considered.
So I just want to make a statement that as we did the farmer's market this year, we had Refuge and Recycling come and have a booth. And I actually purchased some of those bags to replace the plastic bags. And I'm even more impressed with the kind of net bags and the cloth bags and putting them in the washing machine and bringing them back out. And they keep your vegetables even fresher and cleaner. So we do have a long way to go yet, but there, hopefully, along the way, we'll find more replacements. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Agnew?
I've been waiting for this for about eight years. I have two questions. One, I was surprised with 26% said no. Do we know why and where they were?
Yes. When I went through the comments, there were a wide variety of reasons. As I mentioned, pet waste bags were actually a big concern. So we will work on educating the community about these alternatives in our education and outreach plan.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think a lot of the pet waste bags are biodegradable, are they not?
Quite a few of them are. Once they end up in the landfill, though, due to the decomposition process, it does take quite some time. So it still takes an estimate of 500 years for them to decompose. So
500 years is considered biodegradable?
Yeah. They decompose over the course of 500 years, but due to the atmosphere of the landfill, it does take quite a bit of time, which is why we really recommend reusing bags that you already have. So
For pet waste?
Yes. Bread bags are great. Not reusable bags, but reusing bags that you have, like for sandwich bags.
I was just thinking, I got to clean it out, and then I got to go find the dog.
I do not recommend that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any more questions? I just have one quick question about the, so we're, as a city, we hand out at our events the reusable bags. It sounds like that there might be a bit of a shortage. Well, it looks like, so April, it's about six months out. Is the paper industry going to be on top of this by then? Uh-oh. So what's our, what are we going to do about, if there's no paper bags? I mean, I guess people learn real quick to go buy themselves reusable bags. But is the city going to try to step up a little bit on giving out the little reusable bags at our events?
Definitely. And I will say that Seattle, after they passed restrictions, they actually saw about 50% of businesses decreasing not only plastic bags, but also paper bags that they were giving out to customers. And like I said, we will be attending events, handing out reusable bags. And we will also make a form available on our website to request reusable bags and have them available here at City Hall.
Awesome. Okay. All right. You have a question, Councilmember McNeil?
Yes, thank you. The $0.10 compared to cities around us, can you tell me where that compares?
Yes. Most cities that have currently passed restrictions are recommending $0.10. This is because there are studies that are showing that a $0.10 fee is more effective in incentivizing people to bring their own reusable bags to the stores. As far as cities directly around us, it does vary. Lake Forest Park, I believe, is $0.10. And Kirkland is $0.05 right now, as is Everett.
Okay. So it's not, the $0.10 on the bag is not necessarily a profitable thing. It's just to incentivize people to actually use reusable bags, correct?
Correct. And it helps cover the cost, increased costs of paper bags for businesses.
Okay. Well, so I'm super excited about this. I guess the one concern that I have, and I need to now start thinking about it, I don't have a pet. But as I walk through the park, I see a lot of plastic bags. But mine would more or less be dry cleaning, right? We go dry cleaning, you get the plastic bag, you rip it off, and then you throw it away. So it's interesting that that came up. And when we talk about, you know, zero waste and trying to be environmentally sensitive, to me, it just seems like there's a lot of plastic, right? We put liners in our garbage, you know, at home to put our garbage in. So I look forward to continuing to find ways to become more environmentally friendly. So, but thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
All right. For the motion, Deputy Mayor?
I'd like to move the recommended action to adopt the ordinance adopting a new chapter, Chapter 8.75, to the Bothell Municipal Code to restrict the use and sale of single-use plastic carryout bags.
Second.
Wow, there's so many seconds. McNeil had you like by a second, half a second. All right. So it's moved by the Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilmember McNeil to adopt the ordinance, adopt the ordinance adopting a new chapter, Chapter 8.75, to the Bothell Municipal Code to restrict the use and sale of single-use plastic carryout bags. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please vote. Do you want to place them again? There we go. Passes unanimously with Councilmember Zorn's absent and excused. And I think we are, all right. Next on the agenda is council conversations. Are we conversed out, or do you want to extend the meeting, have a conversation? Deputy Mayor?
I just have like a one-minute comment. I just wanted to note that city staff hosted a Girl Scout troop last week. I had been waiting for years for the girls to show up. We see Boy Scouts all the time. And city staff did a fantastic job of highlighting women in leadership positions within the city and teaching the girls about public service. And so I just wanted to thank you so much for your efforts in welcoming the girls and thanking the Girl Scouts for being here. And Mr. Mayor?
Oh, go ahead.
I just want, I'll be really short as well, but I want to thank our economic development person, Jeannie Ash, for educating our business on the sign code. She is going out, going out to businesses, talking about this. And the Bothell Downtown Management Association really wants her to come so they know what the code is and can follow it. So I want to thank Jeannie Ash for doing that job, because signs are a really big issue for our city and how we follow the code.
Any more conversing? Oh, you know, I got to go. I just wanted to reiterate, we, you know, we have a special meeting tomorrow over at the senior center. I wanted to give a special shout out to the city manager and the assistant city manager for helping that board of NPRSA get to where we are today, to get that levy out in the community. The work was phenomenal that you guys did. And we wouldn't be where we are today in the community if that hadn't taken place. So thank you from the bottom of my heart, and the community thanks you as well. Councilmember McAuliffe, for you and your husband Jim stepping up and taking a lead on that, getting it out there. Councilmember Agnew, phone calls, getting the word out, doing all the work you do, sitting there with me the whole time. And Councilmember Olson, for your leadership and work on that as well. We wouldn't be there without her. And speaking to that, I feel like we're in a very good place in our community. We have a great council. I know we will, we will continue to do the work of the people. I'm very hopeful we stay positive. We will have a new council member coming on soon. And depending on who that council person is that comes on, I want to welcome them with open arms and staying positive. So, thank you.
I think Councilmember McAuliffe has an update on that.
You want me to say that? I just looked because I had to, to see what the vote was. We are within two votes right now. Two votes.
Wow.
I know. I've never seen such a, it looks like a horse race to me. But anyway, we will have a new council member, and it's not going to happen anytime soon.
At one point or another, we'll get there.
We're not trying to get rid of you, Mayor.
No, it's all right. We both can buy all they want for it. All right. Is there a motion adjourned?
Second.
Moved by the Councilmember McAuliffe, seconded by Councilmember Olson. There is no discussion on the motion. Please vote. Passes five in the affirmative, Councilmember McNeil in the negative, and Jeannie Zorn's absent, excused, adjourned.